All right, so what we're talking about is just being able to set up a plan to for your local city that will look at telecom issues perhaps separately from broadband issues. Because not all broadband is wireless, right? You have to understand that generally, if you think this through, the best way to think about it is broadband is best done by wire. And that's either coaxial cable by a cable company or fiber optic to the home. And then telecom services is for calls, emergency calls. And even though you can do some broadband by wireless, it's not necessarily something you have to do. And it's also not essentially anything that is good for your community. Because it's very, very energy inefficient. Now, we know that you guys live in one of the hottest places in the world. And so during the summertime, you're doing just a major league air conditioning deal. Well, that's a lot of energy. And if you add wireless on top of that, that's a gargantuan amount of energy. And the point is, you can be much more energy efficient if you keep your big data coming to homes by wire. And then they can choose whether or not to use a wireless router. And then put your small data for phone calls and texts through the air. That's the sweet spot. And that's where you can go. And that's how you get there is by putting protective local laws that deliver public safety. Now, we have a particular thing that can help you out. And that's called the We Wanted Ordinance. And the good news about that is it costs your city nothing. And it just asks the wireless industry to pony up the money it takes to track some real data. And once you have real data, then you can make good local decisions. All right, so if we do nothing else, these are just some key points to remember for today. You know, we speak to the FCC pretty often. We get them about every three months. And we get them on a call with an attorney. And we try to get a sense of what is and is not happening. They were hit with some bad decisions in 2019 for the wireless industry. And things have changed. And so one of the things is that we talked to the chief of the competitive, the Wireless Telecommunications Bureau. And this is it. Every single small cell must go through NEPA review. There's just no question in the FCC's mind. That is a requirement of their license. That's not happening in Arizona right now. And your city can enforce that. You don't have to, but you can. Is it a good idea to do it? Yes, it is. It puts you more in the driver's seat. Here's the biggest problem. You have excessive effective radiative power. You're going to learn, there's a lot of terms for what's going on. But they are essentially manufacturing electromagnetic power through the air. And they're doing it way too high levels. Because it takes very, very little power to do a phone call. And that's because your phone itself contributes some of the power. So they have different ways and different units. And it gets kind of engineering focused. But essentially, hey, there's all kinds of things the industry publishes that says minus eighty-five dBm, which is decibel-miliwatt, is a good coverage level. Well, you know what happens? And at minus eighty-five dBm, that's five bars on a cellphone. Everybody can make a call. And it's such a low amount of power that it's not going to bother anyone. So that is your sweet spot. If you can manage the whole thing to be right around there, you're going to be fine. You're going to be able to live with your state bill. You're going to be able to get everything done. In order to do that, however, you're going to have to start putting some regulations together that do effectively cap this power. All right, what is this stuff? The stuff that goes through the air. It's effectively noise. It's just noise you can't necessarily hear with your ears. But a lot of other things hear it. And a lot of things are affected by it. And it keeps you from being able to sleep well. It gives you headaches. It gives you flu-like symptoms. It gives you neurological problems. It cuts your memory. It does all kinds of bad stuff, particularly when it's too high power. So the way you do that is you manage three variables. Vertical offset, how many feet off the ground is the antenna? Horizontal, how many feet away is the antenna? And then finally, the power that comes out. And how much do you need? Well, very little. How much are they doing? Oh, they're putting macro towers next to the houses. That's your problem. Is they're trying to call it small. But it's not small at all when you take a look at the power. And we'll show you some examples of stuff here. So these are the factories I'm talking about. Is it appropriate to put industrial, heavy industrial equipment in residential neighborhoods? Well, of course, it's not. But that's what they're doing. And the only reason to getting away with it is because it's silent, you see? But if you could actually make it audible and people could hear how much it's screaming, well, of course, you would do something about it. But because it's silent, this is why you don't. What's the input? The input is all this great data that comes by fiber optic cable. You already got a bunch of fiber all over Chandler. That's good. So that brings the data in. And if you just went a little further to the home, everything would be perfect and would be efficient. And it would be a good delivery of the data. However, they stop short of the pole. And they mush it together with a bunch of electricity to try to spray it through the air. That's the inefficient part, okay? Think about any kind of electrical thing. It's most efficient just to go electrical wire all the way through. And or even more efficient is pulsing light through a fiber optic cable. Once you try to put power through the air, well, it thuds right into water molecules and trees and buildings and everything else. It's really very inefficient. How inefficient? About a hundred million times more inefficient to try to put the same amount of data through the air than through a fiber optic cable. It's huge. So anyone who cares about energy will do it through wire and get it all the way there. It's not more expensive. It's just they have profit motives to keep it in the air. But it's actually very inexpensive to get it all the way to the home. What's the result? And the result is that we do measure in bedrooms. That's what matters. How much radiation or power is getting into the bedroom? Well, you only need point zero zero two. What do we measure? Over fifty thousand. Whoa. When I take fifty thousand divided by point zero zero two, that means it's twenty-five million times more powerful than needed. There's your problem.
Paul, Paul, can I ask the question? You want me to just, you want to continue or ask questions as we go along?
No, go ahead.
So I hear what you're saying. So I gotta go backwards. I was on the council when this whole bill passed from the state legislator. Why wasn't the cable companies fighting this? Because you would think they would want to, you know, at least limit some of this data throughput.
Well, cable companies have had essentially a monopoly for a long time. Because the wires companies haven't been competitive in the broadband space. They've had to operate from twenty-five hundred feet away and try to waft it in. Well, now that they're getting some purchase of coming into the public rights away, now they have a chance to, you know, compete. Now, are the cable companies happy about it? No, they prefer them to be further away.
Right, so that's my point. Why weren't the cable companies? Again, I'm just using the general, general state, not so much Cox or Arizona. But you would think the cable companies would have been fighting this or at least presenting another argument to the state legislators that perhaps this isn't the right thing to do. Do you know why they're not engaged? Anyone?
Well, I can only give you from my experience, right? I spent six months up in California. And I was lobbying right next to the cable people against this bill. They were out against this bill, okay? And they were actually just trying to say, look, we provide good service and we give consumer choice. We give the consumers the ability to either go wireless or wired. But once you put one of these next to someone's home, whether or not they're your customer, they are enduring that pollution daily. And they don't get any. The bottom line is, if you take a look at this chart, just look at the blue things. That's kind of what the world was, say, two, three years ago, okay? This was a little bit of frequency and bandwidth, some seven hundred megahertz to roughly twenty-one hundred megahertz and some Wi-Fi. That was all we had. And even that was getting a little too powerful. However, when you add in all the black, that's what's coming. So I do have them in two columns because everybody talks about the right-hand column. Everybody talks about the millimeter wave stuff. And the answer is very little geography actually has it. What you're really going to do is you're going to end up going from six hundred megahertz up to six thousand megahertz. And that's going to be the bulk of 5G. 5G is going to be marginally faster than 4G. It is not going to be revolutionary. Maybe in somebody's football stadium and maybe in some particular downtown area, you'll have these blazingly fast speeds, but it will not be everywhere. And they've already decided this. And Verizon's already made the change. So this is kind of where it's going. Is they're going to go just to this range, all right? Look, your electromagnetic waves essentially are radio waves. They get wigged out in shape because they try to put data on it. So the more you wig out their shape and the more you put data on it, that is the problem. Now, if it were just a little bit of power, you can withstand it. When it's a lot of power, twenty-five million times higher than needed, well, then it pulls you down. So there's your biggest problem. This is resonance. Not many people know about resonance, but watch the pink line, okay? The pink line tells you when waves come together coherently, it adds to a larger peak. And because we have a whole sandwich of frequencies coming at us, this is happening all over the place in absolutely unpredictable ways. And this is why you got to get a hold of this and not let this much power through. You know, everyone seems to think that aesthetics is the only problem. And yes, they are ugly. There's no doubt. And the answer is, do you have to have any of this above ground? No, you don't. We in Petaluma put it all underground. That's a choice. You could pass a local law that forces that to happen. And I believe that's also copasthetic with your state law. And that actually calms a lot of things down by forcing them, for aesthetic reasons, to put all of their equipment underground. But the answer is, what you have to do is you have to really realize what's going on. This is real evidence now. This is in your public record because we put it there already, okay? Here's a tower over here. It's about sixty feet from the second-story bedroom window, all right? We know the kids who live there. They got sick within the first three weeks of turning on the tower, okay? Let's look at the vertical, about thirty-five feet. What's the horizontal, about sixty feet. How much power? Unregulated. What was it in the bedroom? Fifty-seven thousand seven hundred radiation units. How many do you need? Point zero zero two. What? That's what's going on. Because they want to broadcast beyond this house all the way out a couple of miles. That's what's really going on. And these guys, poor kids, were in the way. Well, they got a medical diagnosis. They went to their doctor. They got everything they needed to actually try to pull this tower down, okay? Here's another one, twelve feet from a window. What happened to this woman? They turned it on in November. She went in March and had a bloody mask removed from her head. She didn't have that problem in November. She had it in March. This woman over here had to take a hit. She lost twenty-three percent of the value of her house because she couldn't live there for a single day. That's a real property value drop. Because people don't want to live next to these things. So really, to benefit one industry, we are basically pulling away from your residents all kinds of money values and health problems that you don't need to do if you get control of it, okay? So this just kind of puts it out here just so you can see that there is a recipe here, right? You want to match up the vertical with the horizontal with the right amount of power. Well, here's what happens with a regular macro tower. Two hundred feet off the ground, twenty-five hundred feet away. By the time it reaches you, it's very low. If you made this one behave the same and it only gave you the same amount, well, you'd be fine. And can you do it? Well, yes, you can. And so that's your solution in Arizona, is to cut these down in size. Let's cut to the chase. Instead of a four-foot antenna, a four-inch antenna. Instead of twenty-eight cubic feet of power supply on the ground, one that fits in your hand. Just scale it all the way down to something small. And guess what? It's not as ugly either. Oh, now we're talking. Now we have a solution.
So Paul, let me interrupt again. I apologize.
Yeah.
So if we start miniaturizing these things, aren't we going to have a proliferation of more towers then?
You know, the answer is, they've lied to you to get in. They have said, we need to be in the public rights away because it's only going to go down the block five hundred, a thousand feet. That's why we need to come in. And when we do, we'll put whatever equipment we want on there. Well, in the reality is, if you really look at the specs, they can broadcast out now five miles. So all we're saying is give them the equipment only and the power only that would allow them to broadcast down the block a thousand feet. And that's what you'll do. You won't increase any more towers. It actually goes a half a mile when you're a four-inch antenna and you have just a little bit of power. It does go a half mile.
Okay, so what I mean, you say it'll go a half mile versus a five-mile radius?
Pretty much. We see them go in five miles because they come out there. They sit there and they say, our search ring is X number of feet. Great, we're only going to give you enough power to reach that number of feet for telecommunications service.
So why, why overpower this?
They wanted to overpower it because they want to broaden beyond telecommunications service. They want to actually give you television, wirelessly. That's what they want to do. Do they have any laws to support that? They do not. It's a business goal unsupported by the 1996 Telecommunications Act. So you can cut them down to size.
All right. So the business case is what you're telling me is they need the higher power in order to expand the services offering. Other than the cellphone, they want to do other expansion of the service.
I'd like to send you a resource that is the best I've found. I've, I stopped counting how many hours I've put into this particular topic when I reached a thousand. And it's called the Bioinitiative Report. And they have thousands of published peer-reviewed studies. And they're broken down into eight categories, from neurological disorders to sleep to cardiac, to, you know, cancer and cell proliferation. Super easy for the layperson. It's all color-coded and you just click. And it seems to put that argument to rest. And you know, like Big Tobacco, there was a lot of false study that were put out. And you know, the whole playbook, they're going by the same thing. So if I may send you that, that might help.
Please, please do. You could send it to my personal email too. I can give it to you later. So but Valerie, here's, here's, I'm sorry, Paul. I don't mean to derail this.
No, 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 no. It's better to have a discussion. Don't worry, that's better.
Synthesize this, okay? So Valerie, that's good, that's good stuff. So my question to you is, who sponsored those individual studies?
So it's, there's pretty much across the board. If you trace the money of who sponsored it, you're going to have seventy to eighty percent of studies sponsored by the industry are finding nothing. Seventy to eighty or more percent of independently funded studies are finding biological effects. And even when a study doesn't find an effect, doesn't mean there aren't. It's been four thousand five hundred different effects have been catalogued.
Okay.
And they're also going to use the argument that it's non-ionizing radiation. And yeah, that's, there's decades of research showing that non-ionizing radiation that doesn't make your temperature rise also affects you. Because we're so nuanced in our biology to, our cells communicate through.
True. So the bottom line is that we're finally reaching this little point where the rubber meets the road, okay? You can't lie to one's biology and you can't bend the laws of physics. They are what they are. So at the end of the day, you have whatever argument on one side versus another side. But if people are getting medical diagnoses of getting sick and this is what the doctor says it is, it's over. That's all you need. And once you do, then you kick in the Americans with Disabilities Act. And then they get a chance to move that tower. So we are there. This is the problem, is that we're now actually running into medical diagnoses, which are the opinions that carry the day. Doesn't really matter what the wireless industry study says. It doesn't really matter. No one's predicting that, oh, it will be a problem in the future. We are telling you, people are getting sick today, right now. And they have rights to the quiet enjoyment of their streets and their homes right now. So the point is, it's not about learning more. We know you can't lie to one's biology. You can't bend the laws of physics. We are here, okay? And we have other harms in addition. This takes away your privacy. They have these high-millimeter waves that are designed to look through your clothes. That's just one way they can snoop on you. It's not a good thing, okay? Here's our biggest problem. In the box thinking. This is what we're up against. This is your city attorney. This is your Department of Public Works. This is your planning department. They've been told for twenty-five years from the wireless industry, this is it. This is what it's all about. This is what the law is. This is everything. This is it. And none of it's true. They've been handed a load of propaganda for a long, long time. The answer is, you have to at least be willing to step out of the box to be able to navigate somewhere else. You have to skate where the puck is going to be, not where it is today. The wireless industry has put the puck right in the middle of the ice. What you want to do is you want to figure out a way to make this thing work, withstand this overreach until you can get it fixed more formally above you and still preserve the quiet enjoyment of streets. That's what you can do as a local city. That's what you go for. Now, look, it dovetails right with exactly what you're saying. It's difficult to win the health effects argument. We understand that. It's not legally fashionable to do it. We understand that too. Don't lead with health. Lead with nuisance. Hey, we get a chance to regulate the quiet enjoyment of streets. Got it? How do we do that? Lower power.
And that's my argument, nuisance, because.
It is nuisance, clearly.
And I know some of you on this phone heard me say this before. If we look at the nuisance piece of this thing, it takes away the health thing, which could be very convoluted and very, you know, puts unknowns in our minds, let's be honest, okay? Because you know, you just said that Valerie, eighty percent is from the industry, eighty percent's independent. And I put these two together. Before you know it, I got away and somebody says, huh? I don't know. So but if I have the nuisance issue, that is plain to my face. There's a pole there. There's four feet. There's, you know, something that's just, that's physically there that is nuisance. Plus, not to mention potentially, like you said, the whole issue of getting sick and things like that, so.
So the point is that you don't have to lead with the getting sick reason. You just read with quiet enjoyment of streets. Got it? As long as we can enjoy our neighborhoods quietly and still make phone calls, we're in the sweet spot. We're where we need to be, okay? Hey, wireless company Verizon, if you really want to give them broadband services, well, then bring that fiber just a little bit closer to the house now. Now we're talking. And here's the other thing you can do. You could say, the price of doing business in Chandler.
That's, I've been on that one too.
Is to share the fiber optic cable. It's not all yours. You're in the public rights of way. There has to be public benefit. If you're not willing to go to the house, you have to allow another vendor to come in and tap that fiber and go directly to the house on the very same fiber you're trying to put in the public rights way. Why? Because it's in the public rights of way. That's why. Nothing else. You need to give back to the city of Chandler some benefit. That's your benefit, okay? That's easy to do. You can make a lot more control over the fiber that's on your poles and in your conduit, okay? Here's another thing you could take advantage of. You know, you all understand what's going on. We're in what they call a pandemic. Well, hey, President Trump, there on March 1st, 2020, said, we got one. We got a national emergency. Okay, you got a local health order that talked about what were essential activities. When you read it carefully, you will realize that the building of new cell towers is not an essential service. Not an essential service. The operations and maintenance of the cell towers is. You can stop all building of all cell towers during COVID-19 lockdown totally simply. One local ordinance will do it. They've done this in Eastern Connecticut and Keene, New Hampshire, and in Simi Valley, California, and a lot of places. And so it gives you the time to figure out other ordinances without having these applications being processed every sixty days. So that's a really good move for any local city. Because it really says a couple of things. Now, this is right out of the Telecommunications Act, okay? All licensed radio, which cell towers are, shall use the minimum amount of power necessary to carry out the communication desired, okay? This was identified by the attorneys that are suing the FCC right now. They're going to the D.C. Circuit Court of Appeals in January to argue the case. They pulled this out. This is section 324. It's right in the act, okay? I asked the FCC point blank on October 19th of this year, does this apply to cell towers? They said, yes, it does. So you ask yourself, great. If I want to give them the minimum amount of power for a phone call, I know how to do that, okay? Here's, right here, FCC Order 18-111, right there, paragraph 157. This was passed in August of 2018. They say right there, in the case of a natural disaster or other comparable emergency, a local city can place a moratoria. Well, we got one. I would take full advantage of it. I would say, hey, guys, calm down. You can, you know, maintain your towers if you want, but you can't build any new ones. That's going to wait until COVID-19's over, okay? That's going to make everybody's life a lot easier. It's such an easy, low-hanging fruit thing to do, okay? So here's the asks. We have some asks. And I ran this by, you know, Carrie and Scott and everyone else. But you know, take advantage of this moratorium. It's simple. It's easy to do, okay? Let's figure out how to pass a local ordinance that will regulate that power, okay? And then let's come back with a good broadband plan. Because people do need broadband during this kind of lockdown time. They need good service at their houses. Well, the easy way to do that is through wires, okay? So the new broadband plan, the ERP policing and equipment standards. Here's another one that we recommend. And I have a link right here to the full sample language, but it's a very simple idea, okay? You can ask the wireless industry to pay for a test every six months of somebody running around with an antenna on the roof, drive around the city and come back with signal strength readings of every channel. That means nobody has to argue over what the data is. It's done by an independent person. Everybody has access to the database. Your planning people, your public works department, your local residents do. All the city councilmen, we're all looking at the same set of data, okay? Then you could decide for yourself, do we need a tower here? We don't really need one here. Tell you what, why don't you go over here where we know there's not quite enough signal? There you go. That's what we need. And you can easily say no to a tower if there's not a need for it. And the need is already established by the industry. Anything that is minus eighty-five dBm, which is five bars on a cellphone, is good to go. That's good coverage. If you've got minus eighty-five dBm all over the place, there are no problems. In fact, you can go down to minus one-twenty-five dBm, which is, let's count it. Minus eighty-five to minus ninety-five is a factor of ten. To minus one-oh-five is a factor of a hundred. To minus one-fifteen is a factor of a thousand. And down to minus one-twenty-five is a factor of ten thousand. I could be one ten-thousandth of five bars on a cellphone and still make a call. So that's the problem here, is they're putting way too much power.
I just wanted to mention that something that came up in one of the Chandler meetings is that none of these towers are being monitored. And that's an egregious oversight and something that also needs to be.
And the answer is, you don't have to monitor anybody as long as you cut the power. Then you don't have to be monitoring because a fuse will do it. That's the whole point. A twenty-four-seven police person is as inexpensive as a five-dollar fuse on each pole. That is a solution, a real solution, and can make you money. Because if they blow the fuse, you can charge them a policing fee. And now your city can make money. And that fee could be set by your city. I wouldn't put anything less than $10,000 myself. And I would ratchet it up. But you know, this is all things that you guys can decide. Look, the wireless industry has pushed the state to try to get all kinds of special benefits and steal all the rent money you could have made. We'll make it back in policing fees. Now, we're going to make some money for the city. We like that. The point is, if everybody can look at the data file, then you don't have any arguments. You don't have to worry about this thing.[1607.85] You just can say, okay, no, that's not appropriate there. You don't need one there. Okay? So that's why this works. It works across four G, five G, any G. You don't have to worry about what their G's are. You don't have to worry about what their equipment is. You worry about how much power you give them. And that's then they have to bring back efficient enough equipment to use the power you allow them to have. Okay? Here's one other thing that you really should take notice of, uh, Matt, and this is the insurance bait and switch game. Okay? The industry does not have sufficient insurance because the reinsurers won't give them insurance. So the only way they can insure is by self-insuring. If you're not doing business with big Verizon here, which you're not, or big AT&T, you're talking about some agent who's in between. They won't cover the claim. You're a joint venture partner right now, the city is, with anything that goes on the poles or possibly the uh, wooden poles. Hey, Petaluma said never on a light pole, not a single one. They don't want that liability. They only allowed them on the PG and E wooden poles. That's something you could do tomorrow. You don't have to have any of these on your own light poles until they come up with proper insurance. Which means it's gonna be millions of dollars of bond per pole. Because it's really about the claims. The claims are gonna come forward. The agent's gonna go bankrupt. You're the joint venture partner. They're coming after the city next. This is all explained by Mark Pollak, who's an expert in this and he's winning a lawsuit right now in Newport Beach on this very topic. It's a quick video. The link is right there and I would listen to it. I mean, I interviewed the guy and he went through it and said it very clearly. Okay? And, and there's no reason you have to take on this liability. It's just you've been bamboozled by the industry. Okay? So insist on two things. Number one, whoever we're doing business with, you gotta put your, your uh, board of directors names on our application. We need to know who we're doing real business with. Number two, can you provide sufficient insurance to cover a claim from radio frequency microwave radiation exposure damage? Make have to say no. And then what do you do? You say, when you provide sufficient insurance, then we can issue you a permit. And now they have to figure out a way to come up with a bond scheme that's sufficient to protect your financial position. It's just a business move, but it's a very smart business move to require the right amount of insurance. So this to me is the end game strategy right here. You stop them in your tracks when you force them to make sure they can cover the claims. And you have every right to do that. Cause all they're trying to do is make you hold the bag. Here's your privacy. Um, this is the image right behind Val. This isn't you, Val, is it? And so this is just showing you that they can see right through your clothes and this is what you don't want happening in your community. These are millimeter waves. And look, there's no control over this and they can actually do this. And right now, all of our stuff is being shared all over the world. So we don't want any of this. We've been through the health effects, but it's a big problem because it's all involuntary exposure. Okay? And this is what we were talking about. This is taken off of those color charts from the bio initiative. Okay? Here's five bars on a cellphone at point zero zero two. We measure on the streets numbers like this all the time in, in Chandler. Okay? And this has seen leukemia, skin melanoma, impaired memory, microwave hearing, dizziness, fatigue. It's all there. It's all in science. It's all been proven. This is established. Okay? And but it's just not popular. So that's why you go with nuisance and other kinds of things. Okay? So the solutions, we've talked about this one. Force them to use the minimum amount of power for the communication desired. Cool. What's the communication desire? Phone calls. Only phone calls. Right? So here you are. Pardon me?
And texting, right?
Well, texting takes almost no energy. So you, anytime you have enough power for a phone call, it takes less energy for a text. So yeah, texting will be part of it. However, sit, in a silly way, texting is not a telecommunications service. It is an information service like internet. Okay? Cause it requires those functions. Okay? So look, here's what they want to do is they want to provide advanced telecom services. We ran into this in Scottsdale. And so it's right in their little, you know, you know, they're, what they say is their goals. We want to provide advanced telecom services. But you do also have to provide public safety and quiet enjoyment of streets. How do you balance these things? Well, you got the wires industry coming in saying, well, advanced telecom services is broadband. The answer is it's not. Okay? The definition in the telecommunications act is the following. VoIP, that's a landline call. Electronic messaging services, that's texting and video conferencing like we're doing today. Okay? So yeah, you don't have to always have a crisp image when you do video conferencing. You can put a still image up and still talk. And that counts as video conferencing. You can do that with a low amount of power. So telecommunications service is not broadband internet service. It's different. It's for the, the, the word leaves my mouth. It goes through the lines and it goes to your ears without transformation. That's the definition of telecommunications right there. And we meet that with a phone call or with a live video conference. We meet those two definitions. The minute you say, I'm gonna watch YouTube video, boom, that's information service. That's different. The minute you say, I'm gonna watch television, boom, that's information service. That's different. That's not covered by the nineteen ninety-six telecommunications act. That's the box they're in right now. Look, this is a workable recipe. I told you about this because we saw it in the first slide. Put something two hundred feet in the air, twenty-five hundred feet away. Maybe you got fifty thousand watts coming off the tower and by the time it reaches you, it's enough for five bars on a cellphone. That works. That's not a disaster. That's how it's been happening for fifteen, twenty years. This is your disaster. This is what's happening in Chandler today. Twenty-five to fifty feet off the ground, ten to fifty feet from homes, about ten thousand watts of power. What happens? Fifty thousand units in the bedroom. That's what happens. That's twenty-five million times too high. Okay? What could work? Hey, same antenna, same dimensions, but cut them back. Zero point one watt. What's the magic of a tenth of a watt? It's an FCC regulation already. The FCC wrote a regulation that said, if you could put a wireless router in your house, we're gonna cap it at a tenth of a watt. Why? We don't want you to interfere with your neighbor. Okay? And you're not allowed to put it out in the backyard because if you do, it's gonna get all over the place and it's gonna start interfering. So if you did take your wireless router, Matt, and stuck it on the pole outside of your house, that's what you realize. That'll go down the block a half a mile. You'll give you five bars on a cellphone and everybody can make a call. That's what tells you that a four inch antenna is enough. It's just straight math. There's no magic to any of this. This is just simple, easy. Scale them all down and you're gonna be all set. Okay? So the beauty is it does all this and it's compliant with the FCC guideline. So there's nothing not to like. Once you're there, look, the wires company is not gonna like it because they're not gonna be able to do their internet. They're not gonna be able to do their television and all the other things. And your answer there is, well, in Chandler, that's not a local value. And so what we say is if you want to provide those services, you bring your cables a little closer to the house and you go directly to the house. That's how you provide those services in Chandler. And guess what? That's a law that is competitively neutral. We make it available to everybody. We're just not gonna let you do it wirelessly. Sorry. We're protecting the quiet enjoyment of streets. But yeah, we can make calls. We gotta make sure we can do that. We have this little database to figure out whether we can or cannot. And it looks like we can already make calls. So no thank you to this tower. But hey, go over there where you don't have really good service. We'll put you over there. How's that? That's the way it should be. Cause that's a cooperative federalism. You have a say in this. They tell you, you don't. That's not true. You do. Okay? Ordinance M is this moratorium. Ordinance VHP is this recipe idea. That's really the whole, but here's where you make your money.
How much, how much more do we have with these?
Uh, we are done. We're just about done. I think I'm gonna be.
Input from the residents here.
Yep, we're done.
Okay. I appreciate it. Not that I'm trying to push you up here.
No, no, that's fine. That's, we were right there anyway.
So I wanna, I wanna hear from the, first of all, I wanna ask Valerie, cause you, you've been working with Scottsdale, correct?
Yes, she has.
What's, what is the, the consensus there? Has any council members put any of these ordinance in place? Have they done any of the things you're asking them to do?
So uh, several of them have wanted to. What's happened is that they've sort of fallen prey to the industry propaganda that their hands are tied. And so where we've left it off, and of course there's, you know, almost a home of council coming in, is uh, trying to show them the legality of this solution. That's.
They're in the box. They're just in the box. That's the problem.
Okay, so um, you're, so they're, you're facing the same dilemma I am, or our city is. Uh, we have the city attorney who just wrote an opinion. She answered some of those questions. And basically says, I can't do this. I can't do that. Yes, we can. We can't do this. Yes, we can do this. So um, and I asked for a copy of the actual bill that was written and what it means, what it doesn't mean. And um, so here, so I hear you. So I, I wanna hear what the other folks.
I, I do just wanna mention, Matt, that we didn't get as far as a solution of turning down the power, which completely undercuts any problems from HB twenty-three sixty-five or, you know, the Telecom Act. Um, that is the ideal solution. We just haven't gotten that far, but we have a meeting January fifth to discuss it.
With whom?
Uh, the new council members coming in.
Okay, um.
Yeah, the answer, if we could get uh, our hands on the analysis that your city attorney just put through, we refute these all the time. And so the answer is that your hands are not tied. Your, your, your city attorney's in the box.
I need four votes.
Oh, I know. And so once you understand that you're not being well informed by your city attorney, now you have the opportunity to get the other votes.
And I learned a long time ago that it's easier for me to get three more votes if I have a hundred residents show up at a meeting than it is for me to get three other council members. So my, my suggestion to you folks is what do we do? How do I get a hundred folks at a council? How do I get an emails? How do I get uh, the legislators and kicked off? I mean, these are the things I need your help on.
We can do that.
The next step is a bunch of pizza parties and a bunch of recruitment and, you know, getting it together that way. But it's really true. If you can motivate, and look, there are enough people here who don't really like these things that, that we're finding that they are coming aboard. It's just a question of reaching out and educating.
Sure. And I get that. And you know, like I said.
But it, but it's really up for the public to organize. So I agree with you.
You got a very sympathetic ear.
Appreciate that.
And you got a person that's pushing hard. I just pushed the city attorney again for her comments. Um, which are fine. Uh, city staff pushing hard to get some comments and getting to, I'm not one to go away. Uh, but I'm also realist and I need your help.
No worries. I'm happy to share with you a number of letters I have written to other city attorneys. I'm happy to share them because the issues are very similar.
Yeah, we could start with that analysis she did, um.
Yeah, but we can get, we can do that side by side. We'll take her analysis and we'll sit there and go, yep, made a good point here, but boy, you maybe not have thought about this, that and the other thing. We'll just do it side by side. That way she'll know kinda, okay, good. This is where we think things work and this is where things kinda don't work at all.
Obviously, we're also making some headlines because I got an invitation to speak with a couple of in, industry representatives.
Oh, nice.
Just today, so.
Yeah, we choose not to speak to them because they actually come after us. That's what's happened.
Yeah, well, I'll, I'll be happy to listen to what they have to say.
Well, I think you should. And then you should challenge them on what's the basis? What's the basis?
So um, where do we go from here?
You form a we-wanted committee and you get a couple of members of the public on it. You get a couple of members from the industry on it. You get a couple of council members on it. And we start making progress towards the we-wanted ordinance. That is where the industry will come forward and actually put real data in your public record about their signal strength. That's the beauty of it. Now you're talking from, for real stuff.
So how many residents do we know are willing to send an email to the council and there? And asking for us to help them?
I think you got forty-seven right now in, in the Chandler group. So I, I think you probably pull, put that up to a hundred pretty soon. I mean, you're doing a good job of reaching out. So I think you'll get there.
How many, yeah, I just don't know how many people responded to the call. I, I saw a couple of emails from, obviously from a few of the folks here and I appreciate that.
Well, you guys just had a big meeting on December twelfth, Ben. Tell, tell me a little bit about that. How, was that? Ben Benulus, didn't you just have a meeting on the, on, on December twelfth?
Yeah, we did. We had about twenty, twenty-five people. I mean, it was from all of those states.
But there are enough people who don't want this. You know, we will definitely make our voices heard because you need that to, to bolster what you're gonna do.
Thanks. I, all I'm asking for is this. I need an ask. Okay? What do you want us to do? You want, you want, well, hear me out, Paul. You want us to uh, set up a committee? Do you want us to meet with the city attorney first? You know, what is our strategy here as we go forward? That's all I'm asking. So I can have that meeting with city attorney. I can reach out to her today, right? If you have the phone, Paul. And I could ask her that I would love you to, please give me your information. You could text it to me or send it to me. And then I'd be delighted to get him together with a couple of residents, a Zoom meeting and kinda go through some of these things. That's the first thing we could do. That'll at least give her some education if she wanted to do that. I'm sure she will be. Number two, uh, if we want a committee, uh, to start this committee, uh, again, that's an ask that we could look at and I don't know, I'm, one of, one or two of us may be able to be involved with it. Is the industry gonna wanna be involved with it? I don't know. Okay, why? Why would they wanna get involved with this?
So we have been unfortunately excluded from all meetings for months. Uh, COVID was the excuse for doing that and our ability to speak just opened up this month. So it was at a standstill and where we left it was the last time the city planner gave a presentation that was full of uh, false, false facts that we can easily refute. We're waiting uh, for the next meeting to be able to do that, but we've been on hold because of that pretext.
You know, you're even meeting with us like this is, is such a huge step. I mean, we've not been able to get any of that in Scottsdale. We, we've tried, we've put an effort over there and they are really shutting us out. So you know, I think we, you know, said it a few times, but we really appreciate you taking the time to listen and like being willing to work with us and like, yeah, try, try, try to figure out a way to do this.
Attorney. Right conversation. Um, who do, who's the contact? Paul, is it you? Or I'm sorry, I don't, I don't know who.
I, I think Carrie is your best contact.
Education for me. Uh, I appreciate the input from everyone. It's um, like I said, I'm already being lobbied by the industry. So obviously I guess the word's getting out that we're, we have some ripples from Chandler. Um, and that's okay. I'm used to ripples. Uh, and while I'll chat with them and I will work to get you a meeting with the city attorney. And we could chat a little bit with her, make sure we have at least a meeting of the minds. Um, then we need to work on these political issues, obviously. And figure out if we could get together a committee. Cause I know Mark talked about it. Perhaps sitting down with the wireless and again, it may be an education process with a few of the residents and see if we can get something moving here.
We appreciate it. Appreciate your time. On behalf of Carrie and Scott, who are in a meeting somewhere else in City Hall.
Is it Chandler City Hall? Cause I wonder what's going on.
Yeah, they're in Chandler. They're in Chandler City Hall right now.
What's, what's, they're meeting with somebody down there?
Yeah, somebody I guess in planning or something. I don't really quite.
Oh, okay. I didn't realize that they were meeting with.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Look, the biggest problem is this. If you go through a proper process of processing your applications, you're gonna realize most of them are very incomplete. And that's not to your benefit. You're gonna wanna complete application. So if you just tighten your things up a little bit, it's gonna give you a lot of more control no matter what. Okay?
Listen, I'm, I'm all for a local control trust. I mean, that's.
Yeah, we, we want you to have local control too. And you're just kinda threading the needle with your state bill. And if we can free you from the state bill, then you're got a lot of things you can do. But right now, cutting the power is the easiest and the best thing to do.
So what I, I would like, Paul, if it's possible, is you said you're familiar with the bill, obviously.
Yes, I've read it.
And you made a couple of time reference in your presentation about what the bill covers and what it doesn't cover. And perfectly transparent here, I've not read the bill. I've asked for it a second time now. I'll, I'll get it by this week. Um, I wanna read it myself.
It's on my website. I can give you the link.
Yeah, good. That's perfect. Just.
But what they never touched, which is the good news, is they've never touched the third leg of cooperative federalism. Whatever the feds claim for themselves, they keep, but whatever they didn't falls to the states. Whatever the states don't claim falls to the locals. No one has claimed operations of cellphone towers. That's yours.
Attorney, or you'll, you'll send me your uh, email address or send me your contact information via my email address.
Yeah, well.
We'll look, I'll look on the website here and then we'll try to strategize on how we could start mobilizing our cities as well as our, our state legislators. Okay?
Sounds great. Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Have a great holiday. Okay?
Okay, you too. Bye-bye.
Thanks again.